Wasn't just all about race, Mayor Atchison. Our current administration is made up of all female. So there was not, there's not even any male representation in our, in our management. So we were talking about race, gender, culture, ethnicity, all of those things. So that being said, we've been doing this work with some people from the healthcare, social services, social workers, therapists, individuals from Western Michigan University, from the School of Medicine. We have a pediatrician, our family health center, our family-funded health center. All these people are at the table, talking about how we do this work. So let's fast forward. Here we are in the middle of this movement. We have all these cries of real reform and everything. And so we saw that this, this resolution was coming forth to local bodies across the country. And here in Michigan, Lansing was one of the first to pass this resolution. Linda Vale is our former health officer in Kalamazoo. So I worked with her as she was drafting her resolution. I did mine, tailoring it specifically to Kalamazoo. And basically what we're saying is that this is a public health crisis because of structural racism and specifically some policies that create barriers that are keeping us from providing the essential services and resources and funding for some programs that need to be more adequate to have that impact, that we need to look at this from a health perspective as the crisis and begin doing the work to dismantle systemic racism. So that's the emphasis of this resolution. That's the work that we're doing. The biggest thing I would like to call your attention to, to the resolution is the fact that it really calls for local government to work with a community-based group, an equity task force, if you will, you can call it anything you like, of people that are professionals in this work, have the passion, the resources, the, the wherewithal to really work in partnership. And Mayor Atchison, I'm going to say that a lot, in partnership with your local body. So we're, we didn't bring in a group of folks to say, hey, we're going to tell you what to do. They're doing research, they're vetting some things, they're making recommendations to the local body and saying, here's some specific pieces of local policy that, you know, you can act on to help begin doing this work. And one of the recommendations that they made is that we actually form a Department of Diversity and Inclusion. So Kalamazoo County, we are working at that. We've already voted to put it in our budget for this coming budget year. So you'll see that we are like a lot of other places, looking to really put together, you know, the mechanism, if you will, to allow this work to happen in conjunction to the things that local government is already doing. So I'll stop there. That was probably a mouthful. And if it's your will, Mayor, then I definitely will field any questions that you all may have.
So, thank you very much, Ms. Moore. I really appreciate it. I have some questions, but I'll turn to my colleagues to allow them to ask their questions first and may have some of the same questions that I do. Otherwise, I have about four questions. So, a member of council wish to address Ms. Moore with a question? I'll get things started off then. You said you did identify, this task force did identify some policies that needed to be revised.
Yes.
Or gotten rid of or whatever. Could you share with just, just a couple of examples of the kinds of policies that they found?
Absolutely. So one was, the first and foremost was getting the audit done, right? Looking at our, our EEO report and where we are in terms of our makeup. And so we started talking about human resources. What do we need to do to ensure diversity and inclusion within Kalamazoo County government as a whole, especially in, in top management, where you have the policymakers, the decision-makers, right? And so you, you can't have a conversation, well, you can, but in order to have the best outcomes with the work, and you're talking about infant mortality and black babies, you probably want to talk to and include individuals who've actually given birth to black babies, having them a part of the conversation and that work to help to guide that work. And not just as an outside, you know, guidance, but actually in the organization that's working, that's being a part of this work. We talked about Health and Human Services as a place to start as well, because not only we delivering direct services like immunization, diabetes, cancer, you know, we have the B-triple-C, all these things that if you look at the disparities in health, African-Americans, Hispanics have the greatest disparate outcomes, and yet we are the deliverer of those services. So how are we delivering those services? Who is delivering those services or creating those policies that drive the services? And are they adequately staffed and funded? And then the other place that we wanted to look at, we haven't quite got there yet, was our courts. A lot of the things that are happening in the courts, I want to give you a specific example. I'm work, I worked with a woman who had went through a divorce, she was receiving child support, she had a criminal conviction for something like six or seven years prior. She graduated from Western Michigan University, Magnum cum laude. She was a school teacher at a high school. I mean, this is a person that you really want to help and support. Through her divorce, she went through friend of the court and said, you know, I need more money to better take care of my children. And friend of the court said, nope, we're not going to give you any more money, even though dad can pay, you actually have the capacity to make more money because you are a Western grad, Magnum cum laude, da-da-da. The issue is that what's preventing her from having the career and money that she can is the criminal conviction. So now you've got to look at our policies and what we're doing that's keeping people from getting the essential needs that they have to stabilize their family, which will also create stability for their health and other outcomes that they're facing. So definitely looking at different things that we can do. Another specific policy is we had a employee who had some issues with domestic violence. She was a victim. And when it came down to having to go to court and to deal with the issue, she did not have the paid time to go to court to deal with, you know, trying to give some justice and some relief from her situation. So then we had to go back into our human resources policies and say, hey, how do we take out some of these barriers to make sure the people that have to do some very, very important things can get it done without being penalized with losing pay or, or benefits or things of that nature? So we just took deep dives of where we could go and look at different things and, and made it specific. So we didn't come in and say, let's just tear down the whole building and rebuild it. Let's just take a little bit at a time and work on some things. And then also let's make sure that we have an office of diversity and inclusion and equity, that you have someone that's responsible, that's knowledgeable, to, can do this work along with the administrator and our legal counsel to make sure that we are taking huge steps to, for the betterment of all of our residents.
Great. Other council members have a question? If not, I'll continue with mine. Okay. Now you said you tailored your resolution specific to Kalamazoo County. And have you looked at the resolution that Councilwoman Spicer's put forward? And is that, does that follow with what other organizations are doing? Or is it a little bit more generic in covering outside of, of the city of Albion?
So I think that the conversation I had with Counselor Spicer was about how do you create this community-led group of individuals that can work with the, work with, with, with you all? And I think there are some limitations. I mentioned to you, we worked with Western Michigan University School of Medicine. We worked with some, some clinicians and stuff. You may not have totally all those folks local there in the city. And so if you expand it, you would have more of an exclusive or inclusive, I'm sorry, inclusive, group of individuals that can help do this work. The, the, the greater, the inclusivity and, and diversity and inclusion that you have, the, the more you're going to get people that can come to the table, work with you all, to look at various places that you can make some real reputable change, basically. And I, please don't misunderstand me, I'm not saying that you don't have the talent in Albion, but you also have individuals who work in Albion but live outside of the city limit. So if you, if you restrict your, your group to just city residents, you might miss out on being able to get some of that talent from Albion College or wherever, who can help come to the table and do this work.
Right. And then was the Battle Creek chapter of the NAACP, are they involved as members of the, of the community panel task force?
So Counselor Spicer is working with some folks that I have suggested, I would think that you would want civic organizations, health organizations, you would want some folks with some educational institutional knowledge, you, you want a variety of folks. And I think that between Counselor Spicer helping to lead this effort and working with you all, coming up with, with kind of that well-rounded group of individuals. We have a person that's also an environmental activist. We have some folks that represent youth or younger individuals. We have young moms, single moms, we have some dads, you know, you can't make babies without dads. So, um, so that probably may not, I apologize for that statement.
That is true.
I had to think that back, I'm sorry. And so you have to, depending on your area, Mayor Atchison, I don't think that you should take the cookie cutter approach. I think you should look at your community and what you have and build your group around, you know, what you have and expanding it county-wide so that you can have a well-represented group of folks working in conjunction with the things that you all have.
Councilman Williamson?
I, I'm a pretty, I'm, I'm pretty happy with this resolution. And I, I was just thinking to myself while you all were talking, there's lots of opportunity with Albion College just launching the Wilson Institute, which is their health school, and wanting to have a concentration in public health. This is a great opportunity for us to build a strong bridge with the college, as they've taken on such a big approach to diversity and inclusion as well. So expanding their base to be more inclusive. So this is a great opportunity for the college, the community, the local hospital systems and the health offices to really work together. So I'm, I'm really excited about this. I, you know, I, I called Cullen after our last meeting in June, and I said, we got to talk about this as a public health crisis. And he pointed to Councilwoman Spicer saying, oh, she's on top of it already. And I've known of, I've known of Commissioner Moore's work in Kalamazoo County for a little while. I followed what's going on over in Kalamazoo. Chris Pradel from the City Commission over there is incredible leader in Kalamazoo as well. And so to be able to adopt this model into our own community and make it our own, I think is a really big, bold move for Albion. And I think this will bring a lot of voices that aren't traditionally at the same table together, together to have those conversations. So I just wanted to, I wanted to thank Commissioner Moore for spending some time with us this evening to answer these questions and follow up on the work that you all have been doing in Kalamazoo County. So thank you so much. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I just, I just, and the wheels are spinning as we keep talking about this. There's lots of collaboration here, there's lots of opportunity for our community. So I'm just really excited about this. So thank you again.
And you definitely want to include your faith-based community, you know, and even the business community, because you want, as you increase your economic development base, you want to make sure that employers feel like they can come to your city because you've got a healthy workforce. You've got folks who are not stressed out with anxiety and depression and all these other different things. The more healthier the community, the more healthier economically the, the city will be. I also wanted to say, in terms of our health outcomes, Mayor Atchison, what you want to do with this work specifically is really be able to address your health outcomes. For example, we have in Kalamazoo, our health department, we administer immunization. We do a lot of work making sure that we are, you know, closing that gap for people to get the things that they need. And we have a high rate of STIs and STDs. We have a GeoMap in Kalamazoo where we can pretty much pinpoint the zip code and the area where we have these high rates of infections, right? Yet, we are not based in those communities doing that work, making sure that it's accessible, the healthcare and the healthcare needs of those individuals truly being addressed. You know, we talk about Head Start and early childhood education and all this stuff, and a lot of our children aren't in school on time because they have not had their immunizations. Yet, we can tell you where these children live in the community. However, our work is not based in the community, accessible to, and da-da-da. So when we're talking about policy changes, it's things like that, that drives the programs and the program outcomes that will help you start to see better, greater health outcomes in your community.
Councilman Williamson?
I just, I want to thank you for bringing those up. I wanted to say, Mayor and Council, Oaklawn, every hospital has to put together a, basically a plan for addressing health outcomes in communities, and they have to track it. So these are things like diabetes, heart disease, young, young pregnancy, STIs and STDs. And so this is a great way, because they already are starting to track things. This is a way to integrate it into the community and see just who's suffering the most or who isn't getting what they need. And then it also, and then from a families, a children and family's perspective, this is also a way to look at social determinants of health and adverse childhood experiences, because anybody who knows anything about adverse childhood experiences, on average, you will have four. And if you have four or more, you're more likely to have chronic health conditions. And so this is a really, if we're able to kind of tie these things together with work that's already been started and start this new work, we could have some incredible outcomes because we are a small community. We will see change quicker either way on the spectrum by addressing it. So this is really exciting. Thank you.
Well, you definitely got a drum major here. She, she's on.
Got a comment. I got a comment.
Councilwoman Spicer?
Thank you. Just to piggyback a bit off of what Councilwoman Williamson said, I learned today, earlier today, that Oaklawn Hospital had did a community health needs assessment, which included the Calhoun County, the city of Albion and Marshall and other surrounding communities. So they have this 122-page report that I have not completely read, but I'm sure that it will, it has addressed some of the issues that are, health issues that are a problem in, for this community of ours in Albion. So I just wanted to mention that we are, we may have some of the work already done for this task force if this resolution is passed and we decide that we do want to move forward with this. I think we have a good friend in Oaklawn. But I wanted to mention or ask Commissioner Moore. We're a small city. We don't have a hospital in the true form of the word. We have what's called an express urgent care facility. Does that hinder the, the work in, in any way, or the health of the community, the residents in any way, in your opinion? What would you, can you speak to that in your opinion?
Absolutely, yes. Because when we talk about the social determinants of health, you, a big part of that is health access, right? So not only having health insurance, but actually being able to have acts, adequate access, especially when you're in crisis or when there's, you know, something major that's going on. And it sounds like you have this express facility where people can go, you can get that initial triage, but what if you actually have to have some type of major emergency surgery? Now you're talking about having to be transported somewhere else and, and pray that you make it between the transport and to where you got to go. Even here in our community, in our rural areas, where we do not have health access as well, you see some of the health disparities and outcomes are, are worse there as well. And that's because the lack of access, the lack of having that continuation of, of services. Some people that may have to, who have chronic diseases, like whether it's obesity, diabetes, if they have upper respiratory issues, all of those things that you need to have consistent healthcare. If they can't get from Albion to Marshall, from Albion to Battle Creek, if there's some issues, then that's going to be a, a major challenge that's going to make their health outcomes even worse. And then you take that and you put, you couple it with COVID-19, which we know that this virus attacks individuals who are immune compromised or have a lot of these health disparities already. And so not only are they more likely to be impacted in terms of testing positive, but sometimes all the way up to death. So you want to make sure that what you're doing in your community, that is, is, it's equitable. That means that it's fair and just for every resident in your community in terms of access, opportunity and outcomes. So this may get you towards making, expanding healthcare services right there for, for families right there in Albion.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do want to, just a follow-up to Mayor Proton Williamson. We did ACES, Adverse Childhood Experiences. When I say we, Kalamazoo County, two years ago, we actually, as a board, we watched the movie Resilience. So we became trauma-informed. We then passed a resolution saying that Kalamazoo County would be a trauma-informed community. So all 900-plus of our county employees have trauma-informed training. A lot of our policies now and the work that we do is, it's centered around trauma-inform. We're doing this work with the United Way of Battle Creek and Kalamazoo, with our local community foundation, and that's really, really important. And when we talk about health outcomes as well, I don't want people to get stuck on of these are young people who are having babies, or, or these are, no. What we found in, in, in the infant mortality crisis, basically, is that it didn't matter in terms of economic status of the black mother delivering that child, that more likely than not, the baby would fail to thrive or survive, and the underlying issue was racism. So microaggressions at work, being racially profiled by the police, not having fairness and justice in the criminal justice system, not being able to be paid a fair and living wage, you know, all those different things play into how a person internally processes all of these things, which, you know, in the simplest form, really is racism because it's, it's, the treatment is different from people of color than from our white counterparts. Now, am I saying that X, Y, and Z are racist? Mayor Atchison, absolutely not. What I am saying is that systemically, for some years, some decades, we have some things in place that is not fair and equitable for everybody. And I'm intentionally saying that we have to be intentional about being anti-racist, doing anti-racist work and having anti-racist policies. So it's hard sometimes to have conversations around race because people get, you know, we get a little defensive and we talk about history. You got to learn and know about your history so that you don't repeat it, but you got to create a safe space to have a conversation, to do the real work. And that does not mean saying you did this and you're dead, that's not that. So you definitely want to get people that are trained and skilled to help you navigate and push through this work.
Councilwoman Clark, did you have a question or a comment? Councilwoman Reed, I can't see your face. Do you have a question or a comment? Councilman Smith, I can't see your face. Do you have a question or a comment?
Not at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. City management, Cleary?
Your Honor, I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
All right. Councilor Spicer, since you have led the effort to put together the resolution and you had asked for feedback from council, do you have any other questions or statements or comments?
Um, actually, I just put together the resolution and I do, I mean, I, no one really asked any questions, but I do hope that there is some feedback with regard to the resolution. I actually had an opportunity to review it after we received our packet. And there are a few minor changes, corrections, modifications that I'd like to make to the resolution. But really what I, I just want my colleagues to basically get on board, support the resolution, because I see it as an opportunity for a change to come, to happen in Albion, and a change in a good way. You know, it's, it's time where, you know, we can do, take clear actions and, and they can be far-reaching to help our city continue to move forward. So to that end, I just want to say that if you, if you actually believe that racism exists, then, and that supporting this resolution should be a no-brainer, because there are some things that we need to do to get past that, to, well, actually to move forward and to make this a better city for all residents. So that, that's my final, I guess, comment in that regard. So thank you.
Ms. Moore, do you have any final words of wisdom for us?
I just want to end with, you would be definitely in lock and step with our region, with Southwest Michigan, introducing and supporting this resolution. Wayne County just adopted it. It's all across the state. And so, and our governor, Governor Whitmer, is already having this conversation, even in our state legislature as well, to declare this as a public health crisis. And so definitely get in front of it and, and definitely show the leadership or, that, you know, you have right here in the county. Calhoun County, Battle Creek, we're having that same conversation. Grand Rapids is on board. So from the east to the west, the west is leading, so I'm very, very happy about that. But even up in, up in the, up north and everywhere, this is really taking off. And again, it's not just Michigan, it's all across the country. I learned about it first in Wisconsin and then Indiana. So just in the Midwest, we're really digging in and doing this work. And I commend you all, especially Counselor Spicer, for taking the initiative and doing this work and poisoning yourself, putting yourself in a position to really do great things for the residents. And I just lastly want to say that we're here with you, Kalamazoo. We're going to, we're here for you to support you. I was almost going to come up there and steal Councilwoman Williamson and bring her back over here to Kalamazoo, but you all have a wonderful board and you have a regional support system of practitioners and others that is willing to support you in doing this work.
Great. Great.
Councilwoman Clark?
I just want to say, I appreciate Stephanie Moore for clarifying this, because from what I read initially, I didn't know where this was coming from. It was too broad. And I didn't clearly understand what all was being said or the direction in, in which it was headed. But you brought a lot of clarification in your explanation. I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Okay. I guess, I guess, Mayor, we, in the resol, oops, I guess.
Councilwoman Spicer?
Okay. In the resolution, there is mentioned a task force that the city would form. And I think I'd like, what I, my idea was to have that task force be made, something that people that would apply and the council would approve their appointment to this task force. And basically, as Commissioner Moore said, from various professions, so that we get a broad spectrum or range of expertise for this task force. So I, 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 I hope, I'm hoping that the council can support this and that we can do the work and move forward, because I, I think I'd like, you know, I know Albion is small and we usually don't step out front and take the lead in many things. We are usually quick to follow, you know, but I, I think if we could get out there, get this resolution passed, get a task force established and determine the work that they, within conjunction with them, the work that they're going to do, I think it would look pleasing to Albion for us to make I think it would look pleasing to Albion for us to make that move forward. I understand that Jackson, Michigan, recently passed a similar resolution as ours. So we, and, and moving forward, we can be one of the first to get out there. We don't have to always be last. So I'm, I'm hoping my colleagues will support that and that we will move forward in this effort. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Moore, as well, for coming and speaking to us.
So when I read the resolution, when it was talking about the task force, Citizens Advisory Board, and the charter was cited, I was under the impression your intent was, this wasn't gonna be a short-term thing, systemic racism, institutional racism, organizational problems, goes back, as your resolution cites, from the beginning of our country. I mean, we didn't invent, you know, slavery, but it is, has been part of our, our country's history from day one. And so I don't think that we're gonna be successful in dismantling it, changing our policies, and ridding ourselves of institutional racism in short order. So I, I anticipated that, or interpreted that your intent, what you were requesting here, was a long-term commitment, an ongoing commitment and engagement on this issue. Is that correct?
I think the work that is going to be necessary will require a long-term commitment. And I don't think that even developing or appointing a task force will even be quick, quickly done. Because what, in my opinion, if we're going to get professional expertise on this task force, I think we have to look at, you know, what we want, we, what professions we want to include, first of all, and then identify a individual or ask individuals to apply or certain individuals apply, and then we see where their expertise could fit or benefit the task, equity task force. So yeah, I, you're absolutely right. I don't see it as a short-term thing. I do anticipate that it will be a long-term commitment for the city, the council, as well as the, any members of the task force.
Your honor, if I could also just ask of the council, do you see any role for the city's Human Relations Committee in this work? And I don't know how active that committee has been over the past several years. But, but we do have, we have already adopted an ordinance and have created a Human Relations Committee that may or may not be useful in this regard.
I, well, I, I, I think the human, what was the, I guess, it depends on what their charge is. It may be that they may work in conjunction or with the task force. Because I'm, I'm certain that the, that they will have some beneficial expertise and information to share, to bring to the task force. But I don't think the Human Relations Commission as a standalone would be the task force. Do, does that make, is that clear? Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
My understanding is there's currently nobody on that commission, on that committee. It hasn't been active for some time. I was going to suggest, when we get into this staffing and whatnot, that I think the Assistant City Manager, who is, I think she's your lead person for Human Resources. Is that correct? I, I think, I think the residents in the community of Albion, at a minimum, should be looking, able to look at their city government and say, "There's no racism in my city government." Now, I don't know that people are gonna say that at this time, but I think that's a good place to start, and I think that's a reasonable objective. And I think it's what the whole community is entitled to. And I do believe that the city's Human Resources would be a key element, a key expertise on that panel, that task force.
I, I, you get no argument from me. I think our Assistant City Manager is very capable and would do, would be an outstanding lead person in, on this task force if that were to happen. So, and she actually, yeah, she has a face, so that would be great. But yeah, I, I think that it would be for council to really decide, you know, what professions we think would be advantageous and beneficial to the task force. And then, once we decide on the professions, we can actually identify possibly individuals. I know we're gonna have some people who'll just step up and volunteer, but I do know that we have experts in our community, a former teacher. He taught, he taught African-American history at the high school. And he would be, he doesn't, he currently doesn't serve on any boards, isn't really active in city government at all. So I, you know, I do have some ideas for some people that I think would be beneficial and bring some expertise to the task force. And I'm hoping my colleagues would have some ideas as well, moving forward.
Councilwoman Clark?
When I discussed this resolution with some of the people in my district and, I mean, in my precinct, and even with some outside of my precinct, because I was mingling a little this weekend, one of the discussions came up again, just like I just said, they didn't understand and understand what it was saying. I think it would be a good idea to have a town hall meeting, have it in a facility that would be big enough, where people would understand what this is, how we're planning to move forward. And then maybe we might even get more volunteers and people that want to be a part of this. If it's explained and, and they get, get a clear understanding.
Councilwoman Reed, I see you, you're muted. Do you have comments, questions, statements? You're muted?
You're muted.
Okay, that says mute.
Okay, now.
Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First thing is, I'm gonna be so glad when we get back to regular council meetings. This is about to run me crazy. I never can get on this thing. I've been, I've been hearing everything that's going on, but not being able to say anything. And I would say, like Councilwoman Clark, I've been talking to people about this too. And they really want more definite information. A lot of people do not see Albion not as not having problems, but as really not as serious as you would consider Kalamazoo, Battle Creek, or Detroit, somewhere like that. That's where you really have some problems. But here, Albion has problems, but I would say not so detrimental. But, but they want to understand what it is as not to, not to take what we have and make it worse, but take what we have and, and continue to make it better.
Ms. Moore?
Yeah, I definitely appreciate the wisdom of both Councilwoman Clark and Reed. Councilwoman Spicer mentioned earlier that she had, what I believe is, a community needs assessment that's been done. If you all have not read your community needs assessment for the city of Albion, I, I know there's one for Calhoun County, but I'm sure it's specific to the city of Albion. And I'm gonna get, when I get off this call, I'm gonna go on y'all's health website and look. But when you say that we're not as bad, I don't think that your health outcomes are any better than any other city, larger metropolitan or other. So I just wanted to just kinda put that into perspective, that when it comes to the comorbidities that people, especially people of color, when I say comorbidities, I'm talking about diabetes, obesity, upper respiratory cancer, breast cancer, ovarian cancer, asthma, that I am sure, when I look at your health department's breakdown of, of the numbers, I'm more than positive that people of color and poor people in your community have very disparate numbers in the city of Albion. So I, we, let's, you know, I just want to put it in the terms of health, first of all. So Detroit is bigger, so they got more numbers and they got more outcomes. But you can't pair, compare Albion to Detroit, I agree with that. But you're, the, the worsening in your numbers is still the same with people not having longevity of life because of the health issues that are impacting their quality of life. The other thing I wanted to suggest is that when we formed our Equity Task Force, for those individuals who, like, we didn't make the professors and the pediatric, but actually, the pediatrician did go through it, we did a training. It's called Equity and Social Justice. We had a, a, a group come in and they did training for our commissioners, our chief of police, our human resources. Our administrator brought her whole cabinet so that we could all learn what this work is, how to do this work, and how to translate that to the community. So when I said to you, you, you guys, you know, declare your resolution and then make your first order of business be, "We're gonna go through this training so that we can learn how to actually implement this in, in local government's work and its policy, and especially during your budget season." And then what you do is you take the community, to engage them in your town hall meetings and other things, and bring people who have the expertise in doing this work to empower and educate the community so that they can be better advocates to support your work and to be able to get those health outcomes that you all want to see for all of your residents. It's hard to do this work without knowing specifically how to do it and having a plan to specifically do it. So I definitely would suggest some training. And I'm happy to refer some consultants in our area that this is their life's work, that this is what they do that can help, first and foremost, starting with your council.
All right. Due to the time, let's go to public comments. Ms. Snyder, do we have public comments tonight?
Um, yes, we have Garrett Brown with his hand up.
Okay.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I want to do a couple of things. I want to commend Councilmember Spicer for bringing this before the council. I think it was overdue, and I think, like it's been mentioned several times, this is something that a number of counties and cities, municipalities across the state have been doing. So I think that it's, it's time for Albion to get on board with it. I wanted to thank Commissioner Williams for her eloquence and the force of her reasoning here and the information she's provided. It's been very informative. One of the things, I've been attending the meetings on the park run by Ronnie Sims and, and former councilperson Sonya Brown. And one of the comments that came out of that was, "Just because Albion has a, you know, a long, decade-long history of racial diversity and inclusion, doesn't mean that racism doesn't exist." And if you read the resolution, you know, I, I was hearing comments about the language being broad or it being unclear, but that's really a good metaphor for how systemic racism works. It, it doesn't have to be the motives of individual people. You can be a nice person, but still benefit from policies that benefit some people and harm other people. There's been, there was a research that just came out today on a lawsuit that was in the media about the, the proportion of black people and people of color who are dying from COVID relative to white people, maybe double or triple the amount of deaths, fatalities. So this is something that is real. And I like that the resolution doesn't just talk about health-related stuff. It also talks about the need for racial justice and how our police departments run and other aspects of the community. I think one thing I agree with Councilmember Williamson, the city could partner with the new president, Dr. Johnson, who's been very forceful in saying that even in his institution, racism and white supremacy have to be uprooted. And I think that that's what the city has to do. And I think the new president and the new health institute there could be very helpful in the city moving forward. And then also, I want to encourage, I, I was on the council when we revised the non-discrimination ordinance. A lot of that investigative power for discrimination and stuff was given to the manager. So I, I, but I do agree with Councilmember Spicer that the council can really do the citizen advisory committee and then have that work blend into maybe the, the, the Human Relations Commission. So I, I hope that the vote for this is unanimous. Albion definitely needs to go on the record for, for standing for racial justice. So, thank you.
Ms. Snyder, do we have other members of the public that wish to make public comment?
Tom Pedrone?
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Pedrone.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
All right. This has been a wonderful presentation, and I know I've learned a lot. And I'm very excited for Albion as a city and the direction that it's moving. I've known Albion for maybe four or five years now from visiting, and it's a delightful community. I, I didn't know places like Albion existed that are both tranquil and diverse and progressive, have a university in them. Anyway, I'll get to my point. And here is, here is my point, or my question, actually, for the commissioner, or anyone else who'd like to respond to it. As Garrett Brown also alluded to, there have been a number of studies and reports, including one in the New York Times today, but medical journal studies about inequities and, and over-representation of black people specifically, people of color broadly, but black people specifically. And, and I know Albion is about 33% African-American. And the impacts, both in the sense of being more susceptible and having worse outcomes. And I know that there are a number of factors, comorbidities, working conditions, living conditions, transportation, you know, what your job allows you to do and not to do in a pandemic, that lead to this kind of susceptibility. And I wonder, because one of the things, obviously, you know, the mayor said correctly that this is a longer-term problem. But longer-term problems also have shorter-term things that can be worked through. And I think the mayor was very courageous in saying that, you know, we, we should address, you know, even our current leadership, people on city council, how well they are handling issues of race and doing their best they can in this moment and going forward in relation to systemic racism. But so what it comes back to is, is a lot of those issues are large macro-social issues. And so the question becomes, what can be done by a mayor? What can be done by a city council? And I'm, I'm asking, my point isn't that they can't do something. I think they can. And my sense is that a mayor and city leadership really establishes a tone for the city. So in a city that is 33% African-American, for example, one of the things a mayor can do is educate the city, because the mayor is looked up to for leadership, about what, where that susceptibility comes from, why it is that we shouldn't just think of getting COVID in terms of some people are more responsible and some people are less responsible. I'm, I'm wondering if the commissioner could maybe speak to, on a, on a city level, what are the kinds of things that a mayor could do and a city council could do to really move, using COVID as an example of an issue that, you know, you have great inequality in social terms of health? What are the kinds of practical things that they can do, given that they can't do everything?
Pedrone, we're in the middle of public comments, so nobody can really respond to you at this point.
That was three minutes.
Okay, Ms. Snyder, do we have other public comments?
And yes, I'm Sonya Brown, one.
Hello, I think I'm off mute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I wanted to, first of all, thank Commissioner Moore for her excellent presentation and for taking the time out to educate all of us on the work that she and many other elected officials have done thus far across our state. I also want to thank Councilwoman Spicer for taking the lead on addressing systemic racism. I also want to thank Councilwoman Spicer for taking the lead on addressing systemic racism, um, specifically here in Albion. So I, you know, I've been listening to the discussion and it's been, it's been a great discussion. But i- in, in some of the comments that I heard, i- it reminded me of a comment at our Call for Unity meeting. Um, I think it was our second meeting. There was a gentleman, an elder in our community, who spoke about his experience during segregation and living through the actual integration of the country in the sixties. And, and I think that's one of the most profound comments thus far I've heard. What he said was, as a young boy, um, he and his peers had to use the restroom behind the building because they couldn't use the whites-only bathroom. And he explained that he didn't realize how degrading that was until Dr. King came along. You know, sometimes I think we, we don't even realize how great and how much more improved our quality of life could actually be until something or someone comes along and shows us better. This is a pivotal time. Albion, we have our issues. I am encouraging you all to vote unanimously to accept this and approve this resolution as presented by Councilwoman Spicer. And to actually, let's start to do the work that needs to be done and that's long overdue to address racism and dismantling systemic racism and white supremacy here in Albion. Thank you.
Ms. Snyder, do we have other people wishing to make public comments?
We do not.
Okay, so we are ten minutes into our regular council meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, everybody go off a mute and everybody in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned.